All right, let's call this meeting to order. Will the clerk call the roll?
Jay?
Here.
Bob?
Here.
Cindy?
Here.
Eric?
Excused.
Kurt?
Here.
Nancy?
Yes. Thank you.
All right. If you would all rise for the voluntary Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve our May 30 meeting minutes?
So moved. Shagan.
It's been moved by Jay Stanton-Gregor, seconded by Bob Lynn that we approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. And we also need a motion to approve the LID public hearing minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Shagan.
It's been moved by Member Walheater, seconded by Member Lynn that we approve the LID public hearing minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes as well. The next item on the agenda is amendment and approval of the meeting agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Member Stanton-Gregor, seconded by Member Walheater to approve the meeting agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is public hearings, and there are none. And the next item after that is bid awards. And the item on the agenda under bid awards is 17-174, Petersburg Municipal Power and Light Building remodel. And the Superintendent Nelson recommends the award of the project to reinforce contracting for an amount not to exceed $538,600. $530,000 was budgeted for the project. Do I have a motion to move this forward?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Strand, seconded by Member Walheater to approve the bid award for, to reinforce contracting for $538,600 to remodel the Power and Light Building. Is there any discussion?
I've looked at that, I've looked at the bids on this, we're over budget, but I also have some more questions about some, other, looking at some other options that aren't here, of moving that whole facility up to some other building and to do some of those things. And I haven't seen sufficient analysis for me to say to go for this bid right now. Maybe Steve has some other, other options or other ideas in mind.
You want me to?
You can respond if you'd like.
No, we have not put any thought into at this point moving the facility anywhere else, other than the possibility of could it fit at Public Works and would, could we expand Public Works to have enough room up there? That came up as part of several different conversations, up to including when the Assembly took out the parking adjustment that we, that Joe had presented to fix the parking over here. So Public Works has a lot more parking room. That would be an option. I can tell you that we have not designed a project to do that at this point, and that would take some time. I couldn't do it, you know, in time for, on the bids, the Assembly's got 45 days from the time the bids were open. So that takes you to basically July 7th. So it needs to be either awarded or the bids all refused before that date.
That would be by the next Assembly meeting?
Correct. So, but to answer some of the ones that should be, other than just discussion, we have not done any in-depth engineering to make sure, you know, could we redesign that building or what it would cost to be able to have enough room for everybody.
Yes.
So what was the idea then when Carl came up with this idea? Did he look at the floor plan up there and factor in that there's a possibility that it could be moved there? Because at this point in my mind, I'm kind of wrong with Bob here, I mean, it's not just $538,000, it's another $700,000, that's $1.3 million, you know, to give them what they want. Then they're still on Main Street, and it is a little building, and at some point they're going to have to go. If we start combining departments in a sense of administrators, administrative, you know, like receptionists, you know, like right now, Joe's got his, Carl's got his, you know, through attrition, I think what we have to start doing, because the state was really poor at doing this, starting to combine jobs, we're starting to do that now when we took Joe's and Liz's and, and Joe B.'s job and made them into two, you know. And so what I was thinking was if we, the more we can consolidate our manpower and our expenses, the less it's going to cost us as citizens. So this is an option that I think that we need to explore. I don't want to have an engineer's report, I don't want to send it out and have, you know, what would, what would, what would it look like for $1.3 million in new paint, maybe a new office furniture, update the wiring, what do we, you know, what do we get? And something that I think we need to look at, you know, before the seventh meeting, before I make a real decision on this, because to me, we're just going to be throwing good money after bad, and, and I see a lot of that going on, and I think now's the time for us to kind of tighten our belts.
Yes.
I'm inclined to agree that we'd need to at least study a little bit moving it. I'm in favor of that. So, but if somebody doesn't think we've looked at it enough, then maybe we could look at it for another week.
Well, my personal feeling is that Steve has asked Power and Light to come up with some costs for some projects, and I would like to see those projects prioritized and see how this falls into it before I made a decision to move forward with the bid award. So I feel like we need a little bit more information, and we could defer this decision until the next meeting.
Yeah, listening to the feedback from the Assembly, I guess I would move to postpone the vote on this until the July 3 meeting.
There's a motion on the floor.
There is a motion on the floor, but I think, I think you're in order.
You make an amendment.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, I could, I can move to amend to postpone the vote on this until July, the July 3 meeting?
Or I could withdraw my motion.
That would be cleaner.
But I believe the second has to be drawn first.
Okay, so the first motion is withdrawn.
So Steve, I guess then what we're asking you is?
Point of order.
Okay, I guess I would move that we postpone this item until the July 3 meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Strand, Stanton-Gregor, seconded by Member Strand that we postpone the decision to make the bid award on the remodel of the Power and Light Building to the next Assembly meeting. Is there any further discussion on that?
Just a point of clarification for my own benefit, because I heard a couple of different things from the Assembly. The list of projects provided by Joe Nelson, I have asked that we kind of flesh those out. There, there's a lot of them, and they're fairly involved. So I gave the staff until the end of July to basically do that. So I don't think it's possible to
Have a complete list.
Have a thorough, you know, answer on all of those projects. So that's, that's one thing. On the, you know, as Kurt said, this, you know, bird's eye view, or whatever you want to call it, of what we could do at Power and Light, I mean, the answer is yes, we could move it up there. How much money is it going to cost to do that? Without talking to engineers and architects, we're not going to have really solid numbers on what it would take to do that building. What Carl and I spoke about was if in fact the reorg thing had gone through, then there was enough room for the office staff at Power and Light to move up there. And it involved leaving Bob and Gary down here and possibly having to make smaller renovations to this building so that that'd be comfortable for them. It didn't include, you know, what do we do with alignment? So, I mean, I just, we'll do it, I'll give my, give it my best shot. I don't know, I'll be able to answer all of your questions to a great deal of accuracy between now and the 3rd of July, just to be.
That's fair.
Understood, thank you.
Can I just add to that?
Yes.
Because some of the questions that I have, Steve, and it's quite obvious, is there enough floor space? You know, I mean, if Carl says that the, you know, that it's possible, you know, so the same amount of floor space is available there that there is here, I mean, that's kind of, okay, we can kind of wrap our heads around that. Is there a place to park these vehicles that right now is having trouble going on and off Main Street, you know, and that kind of thing, you know, up there? You know, is there bays so that they can protect them? Those kind of things is the only kind of questions I need to have answered. I don't need to have soil samples or whether or not we got to, you know, mitigate or, you know what I mean? I mean, just kind of just basic, so I have a little more information to be able to move forward with my decision. So thank you, if you can.
I would just add one thing, what Kurt says is, are there switches or are there other types of things that are going to have to be moved with a major cost to it? And, again, you wouldn't have to add a cost, but are there other problems that were, were going to show up?
A lot of that depends on what gets moved, but we can take a look at that, or do our best to look at it.
I'll feel more comfortable making the decision at the next meeting, one way or the other, because of those, that information, so.
Hearing no more discussion, will the clerk call the roll?
Nancy? And this is to postpone until July 3?
Yes. Thank you.
Kurt?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that is unanimous. Next item on the agenda is visitors' views related to the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to an item on the agenda? Gary?
We just kind of, I'm Gary Morgan, I'm representing myself. You guys just talked a little bit about some of the things I was going to mention, this idea of moving or demolishing the Power and Light Building. There's a lot that needs to be talked about for that, there's some issues with that. With that, I have a little written speech to, that I wrote up here, so. "I think the Assembly knows I'm against the idea of creating a new utility director position and the plan the city manager has for dismantling Power and Light. I know of a qualified candidate with local ties that's interested in relocating here if the position ever gets advertised. In last week's Pilot Newspaper, the city manager proposed a new idea in how to spend Power and Light's enterprise fund. He talked about demolishing the current administrative building and remodeling the public works offices using Power and Light fund. In essence, he'd spend half a million to a million dollars in order to have us report to work a quarter mile away. In relocation, with a mechanic guy who performs most of our duties." He kind of explained a little of that, but there are some issues there. We monitor alerts with our system, and we have our meter, meter room there that would have to be relocated, a lot of things there. Anyway. "There's no positive gains for Power and Light, but it's a great, great way to spend another department savings on Public Works. The Power and Light Enterprise Fund is a new credit card with a bigger credit limit. The excess in the fund was originally saved to create a new building at Scal Bay. And over the last 10 years, the Assembly's interest in this waned. Here's something to think about. The hydro facility is going to need a million dollar rewind in the next couple of years. One side note to that, the hydro facility generates about 1.2 million in revenue per year. The project is estimated to take up to one year to complete. So you need to figure out this loss in revenue into this budget. Currently, we have an excess in the account of, I think, three and a half to four million. Deducted rewind costs and the revenue loss, plus the discounted rates to the school and rec center, where it looks like a gleaming giant piggy bank of pet projects, becomes much more of a modest rainy day fund. As our finance director, Jody, said, savings is good. I hope the Assembly has savings in mind and it'll rein in spending. In a time where the state is heading towards bankruptcy, this borough's been spending record amounts. A new library, a new fire station, a new finance and police headquarters. At the same time, you're pressuring homeowners to save, to pave their own streets. You're not doing this directly, but you've pitted neighbor against neighbor now. Good intent, but failing in execution. The last few weeks, the buzz around town has been this reorganization plan. I've been approached by more people over this issue in a short time than approached me the entire time during the marijuana initiative. I've even heard a petition for a recall is waiting, and waiting on your next move. I hope you've thought this out long in heart and take the advice that's been given by numerous agencies and professionals in the industry. Don't let the tail wag the dog. Trust the professionals in this industry. There's no comparison to experience and training, and those that have both usually have managerial skills too." Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak, excuse me, to items on the agenda?
Can you guys hear me?
I, we've got you on a cell phone, and I'm going to hold the phone up to the microphone. We're having some technical issues with our conference line, so turn your volume up, and we'll see if we can make it a go. And if you could state your name before you start to speak, that would be helpful for the people that are listening in. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is Brian Hawes, and I'm, I'm having a fair amount of difficulty on my end understanding what's being said, but I wanted to address the request by Mr. Cook for zoning change. Am I still within the timeframe to do that? Is this an appropriate time?
It is.
Okay, right. I'm, I'm not sure if Mr. Mule is on the line or not. If not, I'll be speaking for both of us, and it's Brian Hawes and Don Mule. We own several lots down in the area that is proposed for the zoning change, five-inch water front. We ask that, that the Assembly deny this request. We've been working on our properties for over a decade. We've got hundreds of thousands of dollars invested in the properties, a rural residential set, and that's what we anticipated, and that's why we bought the property, and that's why we drive seven miles out of town. What Mr. Cook proposes, we feel is going to negatively impact our lifestyle and the value of our property. In front of the planning commission, Mr. Cook indicated that he didn't feel that there was going to be any negative impact to the property values around there. And I think that that's exactly the issue that, that we're facing, is that it might not be his intent, but he still is going to impact people. And what I'm asking is that he's provided the opportunity to develop the property under the permits that are currently assigned to the property, that, that the Assembly does not allow for zoning change that would allow things that either Mr. Cook does, or someone who might buy the property in the future, that could even provide a more onerous development. So we respectfully ask that this is denied.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Hawes? All right, if, is, are you, have you finished what you have to say?
Yes, I, I, I have, and I'm, and as I said, I'm having a very difficult time understanding what's being said, so if it doesn't get any better, I'll probably just sign off, but I did want to be heard, and I do appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I, and I'm actually going to hang up the line.
You're good, thank you.
Alrighty. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to items on the agenda?
Hello, my name is Caitlin Doros, and I am also want to speak about the change in zoning for the property out 7.1 mile. Me and Alec own the property right to the right of the property that they want to rezone. We also want to express our concern because not only did we just, we buy that because we enjoy the surroundings of not having a lot of neighbors or noise, et cetera, but our creek that we get our water from runs right in between our two properties. Since we moved out there, they have been clearing trees that separate our property and their property. I know that, I think it's the Army Corps of Engineers, they issue some sort of buffer that they have to maintain a certain amount of footage from our creek and to where they're doing construction. So my worry is that, I don't, I don't know what the buffer is, I haven't contacted the Army Corps of Engineers about that, but I'm worried that they've already been doing some construction and impinging on that water source. Another thing is, if it gets rezoned, from what my understanding is, that they can do any type of work at any time of the day, which could be 1:00 AM in the morning if they want to, which is another one of our concerns, if we want to start a family eventually, and having that kind of noise and looking at that kind of stuff is not the reason why we went out and bought that specific piece of land. So I would like also to concur with the gentleman who just called and, and hopes that that gets denied. And Alec is out trolling, but his worries were about getting some sort of loophole with a special use permits, and his worry is that if they get, and I'm not very educated in all this, he is more than me, but if they get allowed a special use permit, that everything, I guess, the whole thing with the, just building and damaging into our water system and just building it up into industry, industrial type businesses there would decrease the value of our property. I, I think everyone can agree that you would rather live in, surrounded by wood area than a big machinery area next door. So that's all, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to items on the agenda? Seeing none, the next item up on the agenda is visitors' views unrelated to the agenda. Is there anyone who has an issue they'd like to speak to that is not on our agenda today? Seeing none, the next item is board commission and committee reports, and none have been filed. After that is consent agenda and report of other officers, and there's nothing filed under either one of those. Excuse me. And the next item after that is the mayor's report, which is not pulling up for me. There we go. First item is appointment to a vacant Assembly seat. Five letters of interest were received to fill the vacant Assembly seat until the October 3, 2017 municipal election. And we received letters of interest from John Hoag, Jeff Mutchi, Paul Anderson, John Haverlick, and Roger Sabine. We will appoint by secret ballot after I have, later on in the agenda. Just to update folks, Mr. Hoag has withdrawn his interest.
So later on in the agenda? It's actually not on the agenda anywhere else, it usually happens right here?
I'll do it at the end.
At the end of your, your, okay, thank you. Just making sure.
Yeah. We are seeking letters of interest. The borough is seeking letters of interest from Petersburg residents willing to serve our community by filling one vacant seat on the hospital board until the October 2017 municipal election. Letters of interest may be addressed to the borough clerk and emailed to DThompson@PetersburgAK.gov, mailed to PO Box 329 PetersburgAK99833, or dropped off at the administration office at 12 South Nordic Drive. The Historic Preservation Commission is still seeking letters of interest for three vacant seats on the Historic Preservation Commission. Seat one is reserved for an archaeologist or an at-large member, and the term of that seat ends 12/31/2017. The second seat is reserved for an Assembly member with a term ending 12/31/2019. Seat three is reserved for a planning commissioner with a term ending 12/31/2018. Letters of interest may be submitted to the borough clerk as outlined earlier in this report. And then, an appointment of Southeast Conference representative and Alaska Municipal League representative. Mr. Jensen was the Assembly representative for Southeast Conference and for Alaska Municipal League. More representatives will need to be appointed. And if the Assembly is in agreement, I will fill the Municipal League appointment until the election, and will be attending the Municipal League meeting in Haynes in August. But we still have an opening for Southeast Conference, and if anybody is interested in that, please let me know. And I, I believe that that's a conference call a month, and then several meetings a year, and potentially some committee assignments, so that would be the extent of that commitment. The municipal building dedication and open house. The borough Assembly and staff will dedicate the newly renovated municipal building on July 4, 2017 at 9:00 AM. Tours of the facility will be given immediately following the dedication, and tours will end at approximately 10:45, as the parade begins at 11:00. And then, the final item before we do our vote for a new Assembly member is a teleconference with the Lieutenant Governor's Office on transboundary river issues. This, the progress on the transboundary river issues is moving slowly ahead. Barbara Blake is temporarily stepping back into that role. She had, is the Lieutenant Governor's staff, and she had been assigned to this initially and then got pulled off to other, other concerns. The conference call was with Sam and Beyond Borders, Riverers Without Borders, and the Lieutenant Governor's Office, trying to determine if additional pressure from municipalities would help in getting the state to get federal involvement in water monitoring and in establishing regulations for transboundary rivers. And at this point, we feel like that's probably not an effective strategy. The state needs to step up a little bit more, and that doesn't seem to have been happening to the level that we think is required to get the federal government involved. It does sound like Senator Murkowski is amenable to asking for more money for water monitoring, but we feel like we need a little bit more commitment on the state side to pressuring the federal government, so that's kind of where that issue stands right now. All right, so we have an appointment of a vacant Assembly seat. We have four names to consider, Jeff Mutchi, Paul Anderson, John Haverlick, and Roger Sabine. Debbie has put little pieces of paper in front of us, and if everybody's agreeable, we'll write one name on, and, pardon?
Four votes.
And we need, yeah, we, we need four votes to approve that person, so.
One is fine?
Yeah, one is, one is fine. You want to be our vote counters?
You bet. Thank you.
And the clerk is gathering the votes for those folks listening in.
Paul Anderson, Jeffrey Mutchi, Jeff Mutchi, Jeff Mutchi, John Haverlick. We need to try again, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Let me do a little origami first.
Okay. Okay.
I should say to do origambo.
I'll just use this one here. Okay, we have Jeff Mucci, John Haverlick, Jeffrey Mucci, Jeff Mucci, and Jeff Mucci. You have been appointed.
We have a new assembly member, congratulations, Mr. Mucci.
If it's all right, I'll go ahead and swear him in right now?
Mm-hmm. And thank you to everyone who volunteered to step up.
Guess it doesn't matter that much. Okay, come on up, Jeff. We're going to put you over next to the...
Whack me with the gavel.
Your hand, please?
This one?
Yes, and I guess I need my glasses. Sorry. Jeff, do you solemnly affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Alaska, and the ordinances of the Petersburg Borough, and that you will honestly, faithfully, and impartially perform the duties of assembly member for the Petersburg Borough, Alaska, to the best of your ability?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. I'll have you sign it later.
Okay.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Yep, thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So you have some catch-up here in front of you. And do you have a paper copy of the agenda?
I do.
Okay. All right, moving on, the next item on the agenda is the manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Public Works Crew has been working on replacement of Pearl F. lane and service lines on Excel Street between 7th and 8th Street. We anticipate that being finished by the end of this week. The Baylor Bulkhead Project is nearly complete. All that remains is the final lift for rock on the driveway. Once that's complete, the project will allow sanitation to load open-top containers with bulky items like fiberglass boats and construction by mulching debris, which has always given us a bit of a problem up there. Plans for the city creek dam spillway rehabilitation are complete and prenating is being finalized. We're still anticipating putting this project out to bid this summer with construction in late summer/fall. This is a kind of a recant of something we talked about before. We had some interference issues with the wireless paging system up at the manor, so we had to disconnect our wireless access point at the fire hall for the water wastewater and sanitation departments. Basically, what appeared to be happening was the transmission, even being located clear over at the fire hall, were having adverse effects on the paging system at the manor, which we can't have. So, thanks to Justin and friends, we turned that off, went with a temporary solution, and we're setting up individual firewalls in three of those locations, and then going to hook up internet access through one of our local providers. It's not ideal, because it's, kind of obligates us to a monthly fee, but until we can figure out what the cost is on a, either a wired pager system at the manor, or get some experts that happen to come into town to take a look at it, it's a way that we can keep the pager system up and running and also get connectivity for water wastewater and sanitation departments. J.J. Cesarz, I probably mangled his last name, has been hired for the open facility specialist position, replacing a vacant position. He's doing an excellent job learning his new position. Congratulations to Jeremy Randrep, who he's hired as a new temporary parks assistant. He will work until the end of August to assist Jesse. Sandy is researching options for the EMS and fire reporting software to meet the state reporting requirements, kind of running up against some of that. This will also allow EMS to complete patient care reports electronically. We don't really know what that's going to cost yet, and so she's going through the, figuring out what that all is and what it would mean, and whether we can afford to do that. We continue to have waitlists at both elderly housing and assisted living. Elderly housing and assisted living fire alarm replacement started a little over a week ago. Nordic Electric and Simplex are working together on the product, project, and should be finished this week. This was, as a reminder, we kept having a battery failure up there, and once we started looking into it, the fire panel was outdated. You had two separate fire panels, one for elderly housing, one for the manor. The experts tell us it would be best to have one panel for that whole complex since the buildings are connected, so we're in the process of making that happen. Planning Commission approved a new agenda format. This new format should streamline the meetings for both the commission and members of the public attending the meeting. Joe B. is officially covering our construction inspection duties for the remaining punchlist items on this building. Want to thank you to Marty Sussord for all his support during the project. Made it much more bearable and kept everybody in line. Southeast Conference has been in the midst of some restructuring, as the mayor reflected on state budget cuts that forced the organization to make significant changes, including not renewing the contract of its executive director and contracting out accounting and reporting services. Robert Venival is currently serving as the interim executive director, if you need to speak to them. Dick Somerville presented the preferred alternative for development of a haul-out and work yard at Skow Bay. So, very well-attended meeting, was held on June 9th, and at this point, it's kind of at the PEDC Board to discuss what the next steps are, and there were some good ideas that came out of the meeting. Thanks to PEDC and the Chamber, who will be hosting two travel letters coming here the first part of July. This actually does help a lot, they write nice articles, and then people pick that up and include Petersburg in their trips when they come up this part of the world. The library's summer reading challenge started June 5th and runs through July 16th. Over 150 kids have registered and are busy completing a variety of educational challenges that will include not just reading, but identifying plants, building things, doing word games, making art, and more. Kids K through 12 who complete the most challenges will be entered into a John Ness Memorial Superreality Prize Raffle. Two $250 prizes will be awarded, one to a boy and one to a girl. The library is working either close on the design of a small shelter in front of the library. He's boding his time to project design coordination, and construction will be funded by private donations and a grant from the Petersburg Community Foundation. We're expecting commission due this summer of 2018. Jesse and his helpers are doing an amazing job on the library grounds, and Tara wanted to kind of put it out there how much positive comments we've received from visitors and residents on the work that they're doing. Property tax invoices will be mailed on July 1st. Taxes will be due on October 2nd, since September 30th falls on a weekend. Our annual borough audit will occur the week of August 7th. If assembly wishes to meet with the auditors or have questions for them, please let Jody know, and she'll put you in contact with them. Police are continuing to work with Liz Cabera and Joe Vertigelli to address abandoned vehicles and continue efforts to mitigate issues up at the Lumber Street trailer park. They're kind of an ongoing issues, and they are making headway. It is slower than a lot of folks would like, but we're actually getting stuff cleaned up and getting systems down that we can continue to repeat over and over to help make this a better place for folks to live. Congratulations to Officer Jared Pop, who has been assigned to CCAD and will begin that assignment on July 1st. Officer Rossi will return to patrol after several years of service to CCAD. Callan has done a tremendous job, and his efforts over the years are truly appreciated.
Stan, I just wanted to interject, because we use these acronyms and people don't always know what they are, that CCAD is Southeast Alaska Cities Against Drugs.
Thank you very much. And congratulations to dispatchers Kristy Rumple and Serena Nguyen, who have completed their training and are working solo in our dispatch area. That's it, and that's just questions.
Any questions?
Just a quick question, Steve. Where are we at in our second phase of the building renovation?
Almost done. We're really down to kind of punchlist items on both Phase 1 and Phase 2. There's, you know, like the second-hand rail for the stairs here. There's some finish work on Phase 2 for the armory and the quartermaster's offices, or not offices, but storage areas, excuse me. And, I'm trying to think, downspouts, not just here, I think throughout the building, there's some issues with that. Let's see, some peening touch-up. Kelly, did they ever get your automatic door openers working, or is that still on the list?
There's a couple more that they need to tighten up, and they're going to pour steps for the back door in the next day or so.
Thank you.
Moving on, I'm actually, because this next discussion may be long, let's take a five-minute break now, and then we can come back and work on unfinished business.
Then we get emails and stuff, so... Jay, I thought you weren't going to be here.
July.
Oh, July. Yeah, because see, when I told you we were going to be in the hot seat, you don't have to sit here and stare out at the candidates, so that's... I thought you were not going to be here, I thought you were going to be on the phone.
I don't like being on the phone. I feel like I can roll this around, I can't read people's...
Just assume I am.
I don't ever know where I stand.
Or how about this when you're on the phone? Just assume I'm in this.
Can't see all the interaction?
No, I know, that's right.
I just feel like I'm in this...
All right, thank you.
I happen to stay quieter in those scenes. Keep it on mute.
Yep, keep it on mute and have some music in the background. I mean, if he understands a third of what he's into, now he's way ahead of me.
Because I'm not positive.
So, I just wanted to make sure, because I want to recap where we're at for the public, that we didn't have any objections from anybody on the floor.
Yes.
Yes, she did.
Is she, I don't know. See, I don't know where people live. What's the difference?
Okay, so, I will...
You know, I never did read this book on how to win and influence friends, but friends of mine did, you know, and the first thing you don't do is start off with a blast of steak. And they want to, you know, and they want to trade with press, you know, I'm...
Right, but it was supposed to be prior to...
I'm sorry, Mr. Morgan. You only make, you just bristle me. You come to dump us, you know.
Okay.
Yeah. Let's get her...
Objection.
Don't say that. Tell everybody it's a public debate. Rumor has it there's a recon...
They have a letter to us before the march, and on one hand he says, "The city's been way too... We need to start..." They didn't have an anti-letter and before the hearing?
Let's consolidate some of these office faces.
Hmm, wonder why that happened.
Let's get rid of one, you know, employee and tuition, we could have maybe wanted more reception. There's a...
Unless she's...
Yeah. You don't want to do that, because you're affected. Am I supposed to save money? I'm trying to explain it to people that I'm not listening.
All right, we are back in session, and the next order of business is unfinished, uh, no business.
Unfinished.
Unfinished business. Somebody messed with my computer.
Chisel word crap.
And the item is Unimac and Vesta Streets Local Improvement Districts for Paving. A public hearing regarding the proposed LIDs for paving on Unimac and Vesta Streets was held on June 14th, 2017. The Assembly may make amendments to the proposed LID boundaries per Petersburg Municipal Code If this project is to move forward, the Assembly will need to direct the preparation of a final assessment roll for each street, continuing in the process. Set the minimum period for balloting and determine the final date for ballots to be received back by the clerk per Code 4.12.050A. And do I have a... We can take this in parts, or we can take this as a whole, so however you choose to address it, but do I have a motion on the Unimac and Vesta Streets Local Improvement Districts for Paving?
This would be a motion to move it forward to the ballot stage, or...
However you want to craft your motion.
And if we don't, what happens? The whole thing gets dropped?
The whole thing gets dropped.
Well, I'll move to move it to the next step, the balloting step, so for the purposes of discussion.
And I'll second that.
It's by moved by member Strand, seconded by member Wallhuter, that we move the LID process for Unimac and Vesta Streets forward. Is there any discussion? Yes, Nancy.
How much negative feedback have we received since the hearing? And we're supposed to have written objections in by the end of that hearing, and have we received any new?
So, we did receive comments and letters on Vesta Street. There were folks who expressed an opinion on Unimac. We received one letter after the deadline for submitting letters on the Unimac Street LID, and as it was just explained to me, that can be considered, but it, because it didn't meet the deadline, it couldn't be used as the threshold to not move the project forward. We could choose not to move the project forward, but it doesn't, we don't have enough written objection to automatically stop that process.
Cindy. Cindy?
Yes.
On that, on the letter that we received, I thought on Pearl F. Street, and I'm not, I've driven past there, but the individual's not correct, those people are being charged if they have the paving. Isn't that correct, Chris?
No, because of, because Pearl F. Street is so short and it connects the two streets that are, you know, potentially going to have an LID paving process, it works out that the property owners on the east side of Pearl F. also have frontage on Unimac Street, and the properties on the west side of Pearl F. have frontage on Vesta Street. So, if, and the way we had originally structured the LID was that, you know, half of Pearl F. would be paved for each one of those LIDs. And so, so there's only four property owners that we're talking about, two have frontage on Unimac, two have frontage on Vesta. Does that explain...
So, there's nobody directly on, what I remember, there's nobody directly on Pearl F., right.
There's no properties that only have frontage on Pearl F.
Right.
Yeah.
So, the question about Pearl F. Street, just to clarify, is that people wouldn't be assessed the additional footage on Pearl Street, only on Unimac or Vesta?
Yes, that is, that is correct. That's how, and Carl might be able to give you a better answer, because he's the one that, that kind of started up this process, but it was, it was built into the assessment. It wasn't built in as a footage, per se. It was just included, because it doesn't make sense for us to have a really short stretch of dirt street, you know, in between those two pavements. And so, we decided to include it.
Yeah, just for clarification again, so if one of the streets, for instance, let's say Vesta decides not to go for it, then does half of Pearl F. then get paved and not the other half? Or how do we, what's the thinking process?
That's, that's how it's structured right now, but that's why the question was raised at the hearing, you know, does it need to be that way? Would the borough be willing to, you know, chip in essentially and do that stretch? Could the borough do that? Is there, is there funding that could be used for that? And, you know, so I did provide some answers, and essentially, the answer to that is yes, could be done. I don't want to offer an opinion as to whether it should be or not. You know, I live on Unimac Street, so I don't want any appearance of me trying to sway the process one way or the other.
Do you have a question?
And, you know, so I did provide some answers. Essentially, the answer to that is yes, could be done. I don't want to offer an opinion as to whether it should be or not. You know, I live on Unimac Street, so I don't want any appearance of me trying to sway the process one way or the other.
Do you have a question?
Eight feet of Pearl F Street isn't included in whatever.
So Pearl F Street is 210 feet long. If we were to talk about what footage would not be, you know, if we were to decide to take Pearl F out of contention just because, you know, we don't want to burden, if you will, the property owners with paving that middle portion of that street, we would still do an apron on either side, on Unimac and on Vesta, probably 20 feet at least, just to protect the paving on, on those streets. And so, you know, if you subtract that out from 210, you go, basically, there's 170 feet of Pearl F. That's, you know, what we're discussing here and probably divide that by two, you know, you get, what is that, 85? 85 feet to each side.
And just for the public in general, neither, when we held our LID hearing, neither street met the threshold of negative comments to stop the process on either street. So we're at a point where we're weighing what the public had to say as far as objections or opportunities in deciding whether we move forward or not.
We're still moving forward only to balloting, those people, whether they agreed or disagreed.
That's correct.
Just to add to that, and the balloting threshold is a little higher. So it goes, moves to 66%. The street have to approve it before the Assembly can move forward.
Yes, Jay.
Bob, go ahead. I'm in no rush.
Oh, I was going, I'm in no rush.
My two sentences, at this point, given the feedback we've received and the way the process has proceeded, to me, it does seem like the prudent move to approve this and move it on to the next balloting stage and see what, see what the voters of these neighborhoods decide. So I'll be voting to move this forward.
I think, back up, I think Cindy captured the questions that were asked at that meeting, in my opinion, very well, and with the answers here. If we go for, if we go for, choose to go forward, I would really like to see us, and I've been harping on this a long time, that we put in at a cost, even at the high end, and that we maybe we select a pavement to go which way we want to go other than put all the options in. And so, that we also include not only the high-end cost, it could be less, but, and then also include a copy of the questions, the Q and As here that, that were developed from the last session, if we go out for voting. But I also believe we ought to select a pavement. And so, from that, Chris, give us some information from your perspective, which way we really, what your thoughts are, which way we ought to do it.
Well, I'll probably just read from my response, my written response, if that's okay. And, well, the bottom line is, I think ATB would be probably the best way to go. It's the, it's the lower-cost material, but, but for a low-traffic street like we're talking about, it's going to work fine. It'll hold up fine, long-term. We're not, you know, we're not running heavy trucks on that street every day. Occasionally, you know, there's trucks up there, but it's, it's not subjected to the kind of pounding that you get, say, on Nordic Drive, you know, or Haugen Drive. Also, given that there, there has been a little bit of pushback, especially on Vesta Street, if we move this forward, you know, the lower-cost option might be a little more palatable to those folks that are, that are opposed. And, and I don't think there's, there's a whole lot, there's not enough difference in the quality of, of the street paved with ATB versus type-two asphalt for the application to, you know, really make big deal out of which kind of material and trying to get the best material we can. You know, the ATB will work fine. And if we, if we set the process up to where the two streets could vote differently, you know, we create ballot options that starts to confuse the process. We also have, you know, we have to list out different assessment options, which gets to be fairly lengthy if you're talking about streets doing different materials. And there's no cost advantage to one street doing asphalt and one doing ATB. I talked to CCON about that and it actually could end up costing them more because they have to reconfigure their plant for the one material versus the other material. So they would have to basically pause mid-project if they were doing one street with asphalt and one with ATB. They'd have to stop, recalibrate, you know, they'd lose some time and, you know, anything on a small project like this, anything that's going to cost them significant time is going to get passed along to us as a, as a change. So after talking to Sarah about that issue, you know, we decided it would be best if the Assembly were to focus in on one option, and that keeps the ballot simple and it keeps the assessment process simple. You can have, you can have basically one number on your assessment that goes out and, and then your ballot choices are, you know, basically, yes, I want to go ahead with the LID or no, I don't. And you don't have to choose yes or no and then choose a material. It's, it's basically just up or down. And Sarah felt like that was a much better ballot scenario than, than trying to present voters with a bunch of choices and a bunch of numbers for, for different assessment scenarios.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I was, how, do you want to vote main motion and then, then look at the, look at the, moving on an option?
That would be my recommendation. So are we done with the discussion about whether or not to move ahead? All right, so we are voting on the motion to move the LID process forward for Unimac and Vesta Streets, and if the clerk could call the roll.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Oh, Jeff? Thank you.
You bet.
Not on her sheet yet.
Ooh, hi, Dad.
That passes unanimously to, just to move the process forward. Now, we need to determine a surface type and a ballot length.
I'll move that we, we take Chris's recommendation, use the ATB type and that we put that in the ballot.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by member Lynn, seconded by member Wallheter, that we move forward with a recommendation to use the ATB service, surface? And what was the second half?
No, I didn't have one.
That was it? Okay. Is there any further discussion on that?
Just a quick comment for Chris. I wanted to thank you for the time and effort you put into this process. I know it's been challenging with Carl being out of town, you spearheading a lot of this. I'll be voting yes on this motion.
And for folks who haven't, who didn't listen in on the hearing, Ray presented Chris with a list of a number of questions that he had to dig out some information on, but it will be helpful because we haven't gone through this process before of establishing LIDs like this for this kind of work. It gives us, we're breaking new ground and so we're learning as we go. And I thank you too. All right, will the clerk call the roll on the motion to move forward with surface, ATB-type surfacing on LIDs for Vesta and Unimac Street?
To put it on the ballot for them to choose, right?
That's correct. I missed, yeah.
Okay, Cindy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Eric? Oh, Eric's gone. Jeff?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. And now we need to determine a length for the balloting. How long do we want to give folks to respond?
Is which reasonable is what we're asking, the question.
One of the concerns I had was, Chris, CCON's not going to leave their stuff here forever. What's, what's your deadline?
Well, I wish I could answer that. We just don't know what their plans are so far. They don't have any plans to move that plant. That could change if they pick up a job somewhere and they need it, you know, they could pull it out of here. They have given us some assurance that if we want to get some paving done later in the summer, you know, the plant will be here up until then. But, you know, winter time, fall and winters, when a lot of big projects usually get bid out, and so they could, they could easily have another job for that thing crop up in the winter season and, you know, be pulling it out of here before, before next spring.
Would 45 days from the time of which you send out the ballots be reasonable?
Well, I'm just pulling out the schedule here that Carl had outlined. So this is ballots to property owners on June 21st, so we're on the 19th right now. And he has ballots due back to the borough on July the 7th. With that schedule, and then going through three meetings, you know, to fit the, the LID and the supplemental budget in place, am I right, Judy? And then still be able to pave, you know, that, that schedule would put us paving in late August, early September. And so that would be roughly two weeks to get the ballots back. I don't really think that's enough time. I don't think we want to go 45 days because that almost pushes us out of, out of the season that we can pave. You know, if we have a nice warm summer that runs into fall, then, you know, our paving season gets extended, but we can't really count on that. I would think three weeks, maybe four weeks max, to have, still have a good chance of getting everything done with the supplemental budget and being able to get the contractor mobilized and get some paving done before the, you know, things start to ice up.
And we're doing this kind of informally because we're actually having the discussion before the motion. I guess I would offer that every, I think we've heard from every property owner, haven't At this point, I don't think there's anybody who's uninformed that this, this process is under consideration, and so I would take that into account in establishing the balloting time.
So, but you run back to Chris again, what do you think would be reasonable to have the information back before the second meeting in July? Is that what I'm hearing?
That, yeah, that would be best.
Just set a date, 21 days. Go ahead, make a motion.
Yes.
I would move that we set a date to have all ballots back by July 10th, 2017.
Second.
It's been moved by member Stanton McGregor, seconded by member Strand, that we have all ballots on the LID processed back by July 10th?
Correct, Monday the 10th.
Monday, July 10th.
That is three weeks.
Is there any further discussion?
Chris, does that seem reasonable to you, now that I threw the motion out there?
Yeah, I think so. You know, it allows for the fact that there probably are folks that are, you know, out of town, vacationing, fishing or whatever. So it's, it's probably a little tight, but, but so is our window for paving, so I think it splits the difference and it's probably a good, a good plan.
Thank you. I want to ask the clerk if there's any provision for electronic voting in this case.
Not that I know of. I would think that we could set up some kind of voting by fax or mail if someone needs to. I could certainly accommodate that.
Okay, okay.
Just, I may, just as a reminder on this, if someone does not return a ballot, it's counted as a no.
And that's correct.
It's errors on the side of protecting the homeowners if, in fact, they're not interested.
Good point. All right. Will the clerk call the roll on holding the balloting period until Monday, July 10th?
Cindy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. So there's one point on which I need some clarification. If the project moves forward, we need to direct the final assessment. Does that need to happen at this point or after the balloting occurs? And I believe it has to occur before the balloting so that we have a dollar figure.
Yes, the final assessment needs to go with the ballot, I believe.
And so, do we need a formal motion for that or is that assumed to be included in the initial motion to move forward?
Assumed it to be in the original motion.
Good enough.
Okay, as long as everybody feels comfortable with that.
So, to clarify the terms, are 10 years and 3%?
Unless somebody wants to make a motion to the contrary.
And the interest rate was?
3%.
Yeah, for Jeff's benefit, we set this up on the premise of 10 years for people that may want to pay us back over time, and if they do, the borough would charge 3% interest.
Great, thank you.
And just to clarify, of course, if someone wants to pay it all right away, there's no prepayment penalty, et cetera.
Correct.
Just for the public.
All right. Moving on to new business, we have ordinance 2017-10, and ordinance amending the official zoning map for Service Area 1 of the Petersburg Borough to rezone a portion of Government Lot 14, Section 35, Township 59 South, Range 79 East, Copper River Nordian, located at 751 Mitcoff Highway, Parcel Number 01-174-750, and Government, I don't, Lot 15, Section 35, Township 59 South, Range 79 East, Copper River Nordian, located at 753 Mitcoff Highway, Parcel Number 01-175-200, from rural residential to industrial. And it is, Raleigh and Marcia Cook have filed an application to rezone two parcels located at 751 and 753 Mitcoff Highway from rural residential to industrial. The Planning Commission unanimously recommends the Assembly deny the rezoning request based on the findings in the attached report. Do I have a motion on rezoning?
I move the rezoning be denied.
I'll second that.
We have to make it into positive.
Oh, yep.
Okay, well, what, however.
To accept the Planning Commission's recommendation.
That's right.
Oh, I see, well, I move to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation.
And I'll second it.
It's been moved by member Strand, seconded by member Wallheter, that we affirm the Planning Commission's decision to deny the rezoning from rural residential to industrial of 751 and 753 Mitcoff Highway. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Bob?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And the, that motion passes unanimously to deny rezoning of those two parcels. Rather, to affirm the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny rezoning. The next item up is Resolution 2017-14, a resolution authorizing a loan application to to the Alaska Clean Water Fund to assist in funding improvements for the wastewater collection system. The Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation has notified the borough of a loan opportunity through the Alaska Clean Water Fund. The Casino Street sewer upgrade project has been part of the borough's capital projects plan since 2012 and is also built into the current wastewater rates. The borough wishes to apply for a loan to assist in funding this project for a total amount of $160,000. Do I have a motion on this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Strand, seconded by... It's been moved by Member Stanton Gregor, seconded by Member Strand, to authorize a loan application to the Alaska Clean Water Fund to assist in funding improvements to the wastewater collection system. Is there any discussion? Are there none?
I'm sorry? What's the interest on that loan, Steve?
Ooh, 1.5.
Oh, that's free money. 1.5. Again, just to reiterate, Carl and Chris did this... Well, we went out to the community a long time ago, authorizing a certain amount for water wastewater loans. Community voted to allow for that. And then we've been piecemealing the projects as they're ready to go, applying those to that debt limit set by the voters. And Casino was included in that and has been in part of their plan, and part of the staged rate increases that have occurred over time has been built into that. So it's just nothing out of the... Outside of the planning process, really. But we didn't expect to get it so soon, and we got the phone call that said, hey, there's some money available, so... Did you do that well, Chris?
Yeah, yeah, it's... We would have... I'll add that, you know, we would have included it in the capital... Sorry, capital project budgets for this year, but we had applied for that funding several years in a row, and that project hadn't been selected. And so we didn't realize that because other projects actually dropped off the list that were higher up on the priority list with DEC, that moved this project up into eligibility. And because DEC... I don't know this, but DEC has had a lot of staff turnover in the past few months, and I'm just guessing because of that, you know, we weren't notified till relatively late in the process that we had money available. So that's why it's not in the capital project budget for this year at this time.
All right. All right. Will the clerk call the roll?
Absolutely. Jeff?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is a letter of support for PIA's Comprehensive Strategy Program. The Petersburg Indian Association has applied for a grant from the administration for Native Americans to produce a comprehensive plan for the tribe. They are requesting a letter of support from the Assembly for this project, and a draft letter of support is attached. Are there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Strand, seconded by Member Stanton Gregor, that we send a letter in support of PIA's application for funding. And all those in favor... Go ahead.
I was just going to recognize PIA is a critical organization that does so much for the borough of Petersburg, and I think it seems like a no-brainer to support this letter.
If it wasn't for PIA, many of our trails would not be in as good a shape.
That's correct.
Their ability to help us with that allowed us to, you know, basically, we dropped staff over it, and we were in the process of potentially decommissioning some of our trails. PIA was able to step up in continuing that process of not only maintaining them, but expanding some of them. So they have been very helpful this last couple of years on this stuff.
All right.
And while we're touting their involvement, you know, they've also taken on plowing sidewalks and stuff, you know, in the past, so... Nope, they're good citizens. I think we need to keep them happy.
All right. If everyone's okay, we can do that by a voice vote. It's just a letter of support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we will be sending forward the letter. Next item on the agenda is communications, and I am not going to read the letter because it is in the packet, but it is a letter from Hori Yui regarding the change in... Proposed change for structuring the leadership at Power and Light, and in support of that. And if you are interested in the details, you may look at the borough packet, or the letter is available here at the borough offices. And then the next item up is Assembly Discussion Items. And first item on the agenda is recognitions. Does anyone have any recognitions to share? Other than the one we just gave for PIA? I have one. I would like to thank Kathy Rimmer and also let folks know, if they haven't been to the museum a while, she's done a great job of pulling some things out from archives and shelves and getting them dusted off and displayed, and it's kind of fun. There's a lot of new information there. And also, I didn't realize this until the last few months, that she's been working pretty diligently with the local schools and has groups of schoolchildren coming in for classes. I don't know if that's reflected, if she's counted those visitations in her visitation numbers, but we have quite a few students that are coming through the Claussen Museum now and doing all kinds of programs, natural history and local history, and so that's kind of fun, really taking advantage of what we have to share there. And the Claussen Museum has also agreed to help rotate some of their artwork through the municipal building, which will be an opportunity for the public to see some of the art that we have, and also will help us save money here at the municipal building so that we don't necessarily have to go out and purchase additional art. We do have plenty in the Claussen collection to be able to share that, so just wanted to share that. Anyone else? All right. The remaining item on the agenda is a discussion of the Electric Utility Superintendent and Director position. And I just wanted to put this on... For further discussion, we're not making a decision on that today, but wanted to give folks an opportunity to ask questions or flesh out any more about what they're thinking in terms of how we want to approach this.
I've got a... I do the duties on both of those job descriptions. One of the things I think we've talked about is the need to have individually select, who it might be, needs to be... Have... Be able to look at things in a longer term and have a strategy, plans in the works, and have some skills to be able to keep those on track and going through. And I think there's a little bit of that in there, but I really think we need to put something in there that really strengthens that ability for the longer-term plans to be able to have them in place, have them approved, have them coordinated, developed, and then be able to initialize them.
I would say that stay for both of them. Thank you. Yes, Steve, just a quick question. Job description. Who... Please remind me, who put together that job description, the one I'm looking at?
There's two in there.
Correct.
Basically, we took the... Joe's existing job description, made some changes to it, and primarily was we went to Joe and asked for input. We also went to our own HR, between Debbie and Mindy.
Sure.
And then I had a huge part of it. Certain things that I wanted to emphasize went into both of those, so...
The reason I ask is, just having read through these, it's obviously very comprehensive, and I like the effort you guys have put into this. I think it gives the borough both clarity and options in the hiring process, so thank you guys for your efforts on that.
Welcome. Again, I'll just, you know, hit the... The one big issue is I took out, which was in there, was that the electric superintendent was... Needed to be an electrical engineer. That was removed. Pretty much everything else is the same with some added language, but...
I should be more specific. I'd like that you removed that part.
But you have to...
And I have to say, although I had concerns about that before in looking at some of the other studies on how they structure their jobs, it's really all over the map as are the salary ranges, so...
Yeah.
It actually provides us a lot of flexibility as well.
Currently, the plan is, you know, we've got a lot of Power and Light reporting to me until such time that the Assembly gives me direction, and, you know, we have not started any kind of recruitment process otherwise than that. So that's what we're moving forward with at this point.
All right.
I'd like to say, I think both these job descriptions are very nicely done. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
My goodness.
I was just thinking.
One of the parts I like, Steve, is that... And I... Whatever we can do to strengthen is the coordination with other, you know, as you say in your coordination with the other departments, and the ability to coordinate with SEPA and other outside entities to keep things moving forward and to progress in a longer-term fashion.
Like several of our department heads, this job has to work with other people in other agencies. So, you know, if you look at the harbor, they have to have a good relationship with the Corps of Engineers and Coast Guard and others. You know, in Carl's role currently, he's got to deal with the Corps of Engineers and DEC and DNR. I mean, it... And then, so Power and Light in either of the iterations has to be able to work with the FERC people and, you know, OSHA and any of the other things that come up as far as the work that they do and how they interact with the other communities that are on our grid. You know, Wrangle, Catch-A-Can, the SEPA folks. All of that has to work well together.
And that has to be a strong suit, I think, of anybody we might select.
Correct.
I'd like one more piece to it. I'll be absent for the July meetings, as I'm sure this will be a discussion topic moving forward, so I'll get my two cents in for the time being. As I'm looking through this, it is my hope that Carl Hagerman actually shows interest in this position down the line. I think Carl is a very talented person and would be a good leader for that department. I want to make sure I said that clearly on the record before I leave for a month, as this will be a topic, and that I have the utmost confidence in him as a professional employee in this borough, and I hope he's willing to consider it. And I hope that, as the person doing the hiring, I hope you consider him for it again. My two cents.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, Nancy?
I agree.
And before we close discussion on this, I know Joe was trying to slip quietly out the door without a big retirement party, but I also want to thank you for your service to the borough, and also, especially when I came on as a new Assembly member and peppered you with a bunch of questions, I appreciated your wise counsel, and I wish you good luck in retirement. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adjourn. All those in favor say aye.